Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Council District 6 redistricting meeting. This is round two of our community meetings. And so, quick recap, for those who weren't with us for the first meeting, every 10 years, the city conducts a redistricting process to gain the public input on equalizing the population in each council district based on the results from the last census. So this redistricting is based on the results from the 2020 census. And so, thank you so much for your attendance this evening. My name's Jenny Wingenroth. I'm Chief of Staff for Councilman Kevin Robinson in District 6. Can you hear better now? Better? Okay, so my name's Jenny Wingenroth, Chief of Staff for Councilman Kevin Robinson in District 6. And I will turn it over tonight to City Clerk Denise Archibald.
Okay, thank you, Jenny. So as Jenny mentioned, my name is Denise Archibald. I'm the City Clerk for City of Phoenix. And so, we appreciate you being here today in the round two redistricting community meetings. With us, I have, to my right, Chris Meyer, who is former city attorney and also former city clerk. And then, we also have with us consultants from Arc Bridge Consulting, Preeti and Sam Mather. And so, if you may remember, if you did attend the round one meetings, then you'll hear some of the process a little bit again. So I'll go through the process really briefly that we've done so far. And so, we are using the same process for redistricting that we used in 1990, in 2000, and 2010. And as I mentioned, we do have Arc Bridge Consulting with us. They were procured through a procurement process, approved by the city council, to ensure a professional and impartial process. And so, they're the ones providing all of the data and information related to the census and helping us draw these boundaries and maps. We did have an initial round one community meeting in June, and so, we did a series of meetings then. When we did those meetings, we let everyone know, you know, what was going on with the census data at the time, and also, what the redistricting process would entail, which included receiving public comments either through email or the website, and also, being able to redraw with your own maps and creating your own maps for redistricting. And so, the maps and the ability to create maps was open until August 1st, and we did receive several submittals from the public. And so, since then, the consultants have taken those submittals, and they have evaluated each of them. And now, they're coming forth with two proposals, Alternative Map A and Alternative Map B, for consideration during this second round of community meetings. And so, what we're looking for is your input on these two maps, not necessarily just which map you like, A versus B, but more so as well, what do you like and why for each map, and any concerns that you may have for each map as well. Once these redistricting meetings with the community, round two, are over, then the consultants will take the comments received and also council input, and they will go ahead and create a new map or maps to be presented to the council. And we are planning to do that at the September 26th policy meeting that's coming up. That's September 26th at 2:30 in the policy meeting. And the council will consider then the map or maps, and then, they will approve the new boundaries for the City of Phoenix districts. Those boundaries will become effective January 1st of 2024, ready for the November 2024 election. And so, we do have a lot of information outside of the doors at the table for you, including copies of the maps. And then, any information that you are looking for related to redistricting is on our website at phoenixredistricting.com. And you can still submit your comments through that website as well by email. And so, we're taking all the comments throughout the whole process until the council makes their decision. And with that, I will turn it over to Preeti Mather.
Good evening, everyone. As Denise said, this is round two of our redistricting meetings. And the purpose of these meetings is to collect feedback from you all. And of course, you have the website where you can send us your comments. So here, today, we are talking about where we started. So, the current council districts is where we started with. And the current council districts are based on the 2010 census. And now, we have the 2020 redistricting data that is being used to create these new plans. I just wanted to point out that in 2010, the population of the City of Phoenix was 1.4 million, and now, you can see, it's at 1.6 million. And with that, our target for ideal, or the ideal population or the target population for each district is 201,017. Looking at this chart, you can see the districts which are under this dotted line, they need to gain population. And the districts which are over this dotted line, they need to lose some population. And then, what I want to show you is how do we do it? We know that we have to redistrict, but what are the guidelines? So, these are the redistricting guidelines that the City of Phoenix has set aside for us to follow and for the community to follow when they made their plans. So, the first thing is that equal population, as equal as possible in each district. And as all of you know, that you cannot do exact equal. So, the city has provided us with this threshold, under 5% maximum deviation. Now, maximum deviation is the difference between the most populated and the least populated district. So, overall, the maximum deviation should be under 5%. And for individual districts, it should be under 1%. Other than that, we need to make sure that we comply with the Voting Rights Act. We wanted to make sure that the minority rights are fairly represented. And as you know, that currently, there are four majority Hispanic districts and four majority non-Hispanic white districts. And then, there were requirements for communities of interest, keeping them together as much as possible, then following the redistricting guidelines for compactness and for contiguity, then also keeping the core of the current districts the same as they are, and keeping the incumbents within the districts they represent. And finally, preservation of political subdivisions, which for the City of Phoenix is the county precincts. So, having gone over the redistricting requirements, which we had done in the first round as well, I want to present to you that there were 36 maps that the community submitted. So, as Denise had talked about, the community was provided with a tool where they could draw their own maps. So, they could start with the current districts or simply draw the way they thought would be a best representation for the city. So, out of the 36 maps, 16 maps were presented, or rather, 16 community members submitted these 36 maps. We took these maps and we just labeled them 1 through 36. And what we did was, we checked for redistricting criteria, for compactness, for precinct splits, for maximum deviation. So, we looked at all the 36 maps. And now, we are here to present to you two maps, which are called Alternative A and Alternative B. So, Alternative A is based on the feedback that we received from you, the community. And Alternative V is one of the maps that was created by the community member, one community member. And we took it, we did some minor tweaks to ensure that it followed the redistricting criteria. And now, if you look at the statistics here, the current districts are sitting at 14.45% maximum deviation, which, as we know, is not in compliance with our redistricting criteria. But when you look at Alternative A and you look at Alternative B, you can look at the maximum deviation, which is 1.38, 1.90. And then, we also have the precinct splits. Our current districts, they split 31 precincts. And Alternative A is reducing that number to 25. And Alternative B, the precinct splits are a tad bit more, 42. Then, we also looked at compactness. And you can see the compactness scores. And then, the number of precincts that were moved. And that number came from comparing it to the current districts. So with that, I want to show you Alternative A. And here, we have the map. And of course, you know, you may be thinking, I can't see it from back there. But you can see that there are large maps printed there. And you also have handouts. And these are the precincts which are being moved. And these are 22 precincts which are being moved in Alternative A. And the syntax is, if you look at it, the example here is blue field. It's currently split in D2 and D3. And now, it's being assigned to D3. So you can look at these, and these PowerPoint presentations are going to be on the website. So you can see that later as well. The next thing, we told you that we need to make sure that the minority rights are preserved. So currently, we have four Hispanic majority districts and four non-Hispanic white majority districts. And we are happy to say here that in Alternative A, both at total population and voting age population, we are being able to maintain those districts. Now, let's take a look at Alternative B. In Alternative B, you can see there are 33 changes. And the same syntax, you know, if a precinct is currently in a district, like Augusta Precinct is in D5, and they are proposing to move it to D1. So, this is what we have. And you can see that the maximum deviation and all the statistics is over here. Now, showing you that majority population is the same balance that we currently have at the total population level and the voting age population level for Alternative B. So what this means is, Alternative A and Alternative B meet the redistricting requirements. And as Denise said, we are here to gather input from you, not just, I like A better or I like B better. Which one serves your needs more? And you can let us know your comments here, or you can write it on the website. With that, I want to do a comparative analysis for Alternative A and B, and we'll focus on District 6. As you know, this purple district is your District 6 here. And you have Alternative A and Alternative B. And you can see that Alternative A has four changes, while Alternative B has eight changes. And while you can look at these changes, the table and the map, I just want to emphasize that the changes are in this upper part of D6. So let's take a look at Alternative A. And if you, so here, you can see that these two precincts, Glen Precinct and Orange Wood Precinct, Glen is coming from D3, and it's going to be split in 5 and 6. And Orange Wood is coming from 5 and going to 6. Solano Precinct, which is currently split in 4, 5, and 6, is going to be now in D4 and D6. And you can see the Mayflower Precinct, which is over here. It's currently split in 6 and 8. And now, it's going to be in D6. So those are the changes for Alternative A. And you can see the changes, the number of changes is four. Moving on to Alternative B, we have more changes here. And you can see, all the changes are listed over here. And as you see, you can see the changes are here. Hall, Rancho, you can see Xavier. And here, Colonnade. So you can see all the changes are here. And with that, we just want to show you Alternative A and B together. And also, want to show you the statistics, overall statistics for Alternative A and B. And now, I want to turn the floor to you for your questions and comments. Thank you.
Okay, we have four comment cards. And so, we do have a microphone up front. If you'd like to come up to the microphone for your comments. First up is Nicole Dezon.
Hello, thank you so much. My name is Nicole Dezon, and I'm a proud Phoenix resident of over 15 years. I'm here to voice my concerns over both Alternate A and Alternative B as our neighborhood is still split in both sets of maps. I live near Pierce Park, which is on the border of District 6 and District 8. And we've had several problems arise in the shopping center, Arcadia Crossing, as well as the park, which are considered part of District 8 in our current map, as well as those two alternatives. But the problems actually directly impact our neighborhood, which is in District 6. And so, we feel we have no recourse to address the concerns as most of the accountability lies in District 8. And so, we do request you to consider keeping all of between 44th and 48th Street from Thomas to McDowell. We would like to have all of that be considered part of District 6. And we do believe that that would also meet your needs of diversifying and increasing the population of District 6, but meeting our neighborhood's needs of unifying our neighborhood to connect us with city services.
Thank you. And next, we have Ginny Ann Sumner.
I appreciate it. Good evening, thank you for this opportunity. And also, thank you for putting the major street names on the map. That really does help. First, I want you to know, I do support Shannon McBride's comments when she wrote in your email address, "Just curious why we wouldn't match up district boundaries with NSD project areas, PDs, precincts, and village planning committees." It would be so much easier to have team conversations and cooperative collaboration for a given area as opposed to being split up just by voting districts. Regarding District 6, I don't understand why Arcadia Crossing from 44th Street, along 44th Street from Thomas to Oak Street is not included. There aren't any neighbors there. And at minimum, I would support going from 44th Street from Thomas to Oak Street to be included in District 6. And because I also support what Shannon said, I, with cooperative services from the City of Phoenix and neighborhoods, I'd really like to see, my preference is to see the area from 44th Street to 48th Street, Thomas to McDowell included in District 6. That is the 44th Community Alliance boundaries. And again, there aren't any residential units in Pierce Park. So it's not going to play that much with the numbers. I read the comments that are online about District 8 and District 6. And I agree that the options we're being presented right now do not really serve Levine and Owatuki well. I think the City of Phoenix can do better than this and without using the excuse that we just need more council districts. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Mike Brannon.
Good evening. Mike Brannon, United Phoenix Firefighters Association, representing 1,700 members and a D6 resident as well. We've been involved in this process from the very beginning, and I wanted to make sure that, we wanted to make sure that there was a fair and equitable process. And I can assure you, there was. We were one of four finalists in a map. And we feel that Map A best represents what we felt was important to the community and our members. And that's why we're supporting Map A. Thank you.
And next, Tim Kenobi. Thank you. And Teresa Pulido.
I didn't really look at this as much as some of the other people prior to attending, but I think my main concern is that it may be too late, obviously, but I don't care for either option. And I don't care for either option because I think we have some conflicting messages. I think we have council members who frankly want to keep the districts as close as they can as possible to what's existing. And we all know the reasons for that. But you can't do that by stretching out either vertically or horizontally the rest of the district. So for example, my concern is the Creighton area. So, I grew up in the Creighton area. My dad's 88, I just moved back in. At one time, we were considered part of 6. And now, we're the random part of 8. That's the north side and not considered the south side of 8. So everybody always ignores us, but 6 and everybody else ignores us too. So we don't really have a voice. And so, now, they're going to extend us out to 4 in this one little part where it looks like there's like three or four districts here, sections. And I think that's going to minimize the voice that we did have because we really haven't had one. We rarely, if anything, have any of District 8 come up here. Oftentimes, we get ignored by District 6 because we weren't the Biltmore area, although it was part of the 24th Street corridor. And my other concern is the geographic compactness of those areas. If you look at it, it's stretched really thin and narrow in through there. But this is for the next 10 years, and district lines have power. And I personally worked on the 2000 redistricting statewide and was responsible for the statewide outreach. And that was the only time we did not have any litigation because we ensured that we had voice and community. And so, it may be remain majority Hispanic areas, but with Hispanic community members that don't have the same centeredness around the same school districts and churches, social and civic organizations, housing, transit routes. We're considered the east side. You're stretching us out into the west side. You have the division on the other side of the 51. There's a lot of issues with this, and I'm concerned that not that many people are attending. Many of them are doing the course of the workday. They're not being, the importance is not being educated. We made sure that everybody understood. And it's not enough to just post it on a website when people are dealing with, you know, basic needs and those issues that are happening. I'm not saying the desire isn't there, but one thing that's loud and clear is that current incumbents want to make sure that they minimize whatever their boundaries are as little as possible. And that in itself is disappointing, but something that's to be expected. So I don't like that what was 8 is now going to be part of 4 in order to meet that need. And also, we still remain without a voice. You're dividing up a school district, you're dividing them up by the 51, you're dividing them up by, you're still including part of them into 8, which never really has a voice. I could go on, but I'm concerned about this. And I think there's going to be a lot of issues if someone took the time to do some litigation.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Eric Gorsinger? Sorry.
I brought along a relic. This was, I grabbed this like five minutes before I came out the door. I live about a half mile from here. This is the diversion of that big one from 20 years ago. And I had one of those even 30 years ago. Yeah, my name's Eric Gorsinger. I live, I'm actually in 8 right now. I've historically been in 6 and even 3. I wasn't really going to speak on anything, but I have a couple thoughts. First is, I'm happy that I'm standing here and not hearing a discussion about 10 rather than 8 districts. I remember when this was first reported in the paper, which is actually how I found out about it, that, I just can't think of a political body in my 30 years of public policy experiences that's been improved by going, adding the number of elected officials. Nothing against elected officials. I spent my lives working for them. But I guess my main thing, I don't have, I don't have a dog in the fight. A, B, I just really looked at them for the first time now. I don't see the difference much at all. I do wish that there was an alternative that took care of what has always been the Barbell District. And the problem has always been that Owatuki is not big enough. I don't know what the population of Owatuki is now, but that's always been since the 80s when we first went to the district system. That's been the problem. However, since then, you have had growth in Owatuki. You've had massive growth in the Levine area. You now have a Loop 202 that effectively connects that. I can go to, I live in another house out in Tempe, and I can go to the west side in like 20 minutes, way faster than I can go over the top. That's effectively a South Mountain kind of, you could almost call it, it's not contiguous, but it sure makes more sense than a four or five mile line 10 feet wide that connects Arcadia and Owatuki. So, I don't know if it's too late to consider that. I'm planning to bring it up again. I just, one thing is that I could look, if I could find that map from the 80s or even the one from the 90s, that's the one from 2003, they will show very, very marginal changes between the districts. And I know, I mean, 20 years ago, I was working in the mayor's office. 20 years ago, 22 years ago tonight, I was working in the mayor's office, and I remember that very well. And I could tell you, I could point at that map, and I could tell you where every single house is of every single council member. I can't tell you one anymore. I can't even tell you where the mayor lives on these maps. And that, but that's good. But what I can say is, that's always in the back of the mind of the consultant and everybody who has to do these things. And I think it drives a lot of the final decision too often. And I'll wrap things up just by saying, I really believe we could take some of the rough edges off some of these. And I think compactness and contiguity count for a lot more. And if there is an improvement that can be made, I think that's what I would do. And the other thing, please, and when you do, if it's possible, it makes a lot more sense to consumer of this information when you're sitting out there, to be able to see this kind of graphically. When you put them up and there's these law, this big matrix of numbers between precincts, nobody thinks in precincts anymore. I'm in Ruby, I guess. And the only reason I know that is because I looked before I came. 10 years ago, there were 1,000 precincts in Maricopa County. Now, I don't know what there are, 160. There were 300 in Phoenix. I don't know what there are now, 100 something. Plus or minus margin error of two beers, okay? So, I don't even know. But no one thinks in terms of precincts. But they do think in terms of visual graphics. So if I, I would like it a lot better if I could see, here's the current map, here is A. And let's see the difference between them. And the same with B. I think that would be more meaningful, and people would be more engaged with it. So, thank you for your work, and that's my comment.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your comments. We do appreciate your attendance. I did want to say thank you to staff. In terms of your comments, they're very helpful, and we are taking them into consideration. We are still receiving those comments, and we'll be publishing more comments as well online. And as the consultants are redrawing, you know, the last map or maps for the council, they will be looking at these comments as well. And so, I appreciate that. A couple of things just to wrap up real quick is, for the precincts, we do use the voting precincts. That is one of the principles that was discussed early on, which is a key component for this particular process to ensure that when the council districts have elections, they can go ahead and have results that are meaningful.
they can go ahead and have results that are meaningful in terms of the precincts, since the county precincts is what we go with. But we do appreciate all of your comments related to, you know, your neighborhoods in particular. And thank you again to staff. We appreciate you being here. And if there's no other questions, then I think we are done. Thank you very much. One moment.
I just want to add one comment. If you could go on the website, there are interactive maps. And you can zoom in, zoom out. You can type in your address and you can see. And you have the current districts there as well as Alternative A and B. And you have the precinct numbers. So feel free to play with that. And on paper, you can only put so much. But when you look at these interactive maps, we feel that you will find them more useful, more helpful. Okay? Thank you.
So we are taking comments all the way through the process. We're going to go to council with this, with the full council on the 26th of September, which is the policy meeting. So during that meeting, we'll still be taking comments from the public. But if you want them considered ahead of time, then, you know, this week would be great. And then we're going to start preparing the report for the council the week prior to the 26th. So this week is ideal for any last comments that you want the consultant to consider. Otherwise, we'll still continue taking comments. And the council will also consider those comments potentially as well. So the question's whether there's a limitation on the number of comments. There is not a limitation on the number of comments. So it could be that we originally put the comments out through August 15. And then today, we just updated it again for September 7. So if for some reason you submitted more than one comment and you didn't get it in there, you can email us and I can check it. But you are not limited to any number of comments. Okay. Okay, I will take a look at that as well. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right. Well, we appreciate you so much for coming out. And thank you so much.